Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May 10th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. It's hard to believe it's May already. Our word for the day is Proverbs 15, 1 through 3. A gentle answer deflects anger, but harsh words make tempers flare. The tongue of the wise makes knowledge appealing, but the mouth of a fool belches out foolishness. The Lord is watching everywhere, keeping his eye on both the evil and the good. And I have the dog from the kennel. What a treat. Jerry, this one's for you. Look at that face. Look at that...
Yeah, hurt the dog, Lori.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to hurt you all. Look at this little baby. When's she available to?
Today.
She's available today. Oh, she's probably going to be a lottery dog. That's what we switched to. Now we're doing the lottery, so it used to be first come, first served, so if you're interested... Look at that. She wants to play. She just wants to play. Look at how cute you are. Come down to the kennel. We have other dogs. She's a puppy, but we have older dogs. Are we fools still?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four dogs. So come on out, see us, take her home. She makes some of you a great pet. Thank you. Come on, baby. Come on. Puppies are so much fun. Okay, Madam Clerk.
We have a tax abatement in Enterprise Zone. Kevin McDonald, President of Cooley's Inc., and Mayor Buellin, City of Vermillion are present today, so approving an Enterprise Zone tax abatement agreement between the City of Vermillion, McDonald Property Management, LTD, and Cooley's, Inc., which calls for sixteen thousand to twenty-five thousand square feet addition to its Vermillion facility at a minimum of one million in creation of six new full-time jobs. Abatement will be for ten years on rural property at seventy-five percent abatement.
Jerry, do you want to come up and introduce everyone? Mayor Buellin?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm happy to have with me today Kevin McDaniel. He's the owner of Cooley's, Inc. Along with him is the mayor, the esteemed mayor of Vermillion, Eileen. And we're here today to present a request for an Enterprise Zone approval by the county. I've reviewed all of the documents. The schools have been notified according to law. Actually had a meeting with the schools and they were quite okay with the agreement that's being presented this morning. I will say that Cooley's was here back in 2008 for an expansion at that time, of which they met all the obligations. As a matter of fact, they exceeded the job creation. Originally, it was six jobs. They created ten that they claimed to this, but they actually created sixteen, so they're up to, I believe, fifty-two now.
A little higher if we could find them all.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to give you a little update on what he's actually doing, and then have the mayor say anything she would like to say.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Welcome back. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I appreciate the partnership. It's pretty simple, really. I've got some wonderful employees that have done a nice job for me, so most of our customers are asking us to do more. And so they've come to us and said, you know, please add more machines and add some space and do more parts for us. And so that's what we're trying to do. It's just about putting more space in there so we can add machines, and then if you add machines, you add people.
Great.
Beautiful. Well, open that corner.
Nice list of customers and a nice group of employees.
Awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate your investment. Just appreciate the investment, Kevin. Nice job.
Yeah, well, we appreciate the partnership and it's going well, so we appreciate it.
Good.
I had a chance to visit your website the other day and was really impressed with what you're doing, and also I'd liked the comment you made about growing your employees and helping them to improve. That's something you don't often see on websites when people refer to employees, so it's nice to see that you're very concerned about developing your employees, helping them to grow, and really enjoy the work environment.
Absolutely. Well, I work there every day, too, so we try to say it's a great place to buy parts and a great place to work. And so it's a team and we all want to enjoy going there every day.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, did you have any comments?
Just that the city is very excited to have them expand. As you know, it's hard to find manufacturing jobs, and this is a real asset to Vermillion, and City Council unanimously approved it, as well as the School Board unanimously approved it. So everybody's in favor of this, and we're excited to see them expand.
Well, Mayor, are you sure you really want to leave at this point?
Yeah, right. Can we talk you into staying?
It's kind of late to think about that right now.
I just want to say it's been great. We've been working closely with you on our Lakefront Initiative, and you know, I'm constantly reading about all the grants that you're bringing into the community. I mean, you've done amazing work for the community, and we truly do want you to stay.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
We're going to miss you, Mayor Buellin. We really are. It's glad to see you up here again before you ride off and you just go boating.
I'm not going out.
Oh, okay. Back to the marina?
Yep, that's right.
Good.
Well, thank you. Nice job, Jerry. Nice job, staff. Again, thank you for your investment, Kevin, and Mayor, always what you've done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Shall we make our motion to approve? So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as a new campaign on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
It's our new employee here.
Gone for one meeting and they forget all about you. Oh, my goodness.
Tough place to work, huh?
It is a very tough place to work. Commissioners, I do have a need for an executive session this morning. I have a significant amount of potential hires at Job and Family Services I'd like to discuss, also over at Workforce Development, possibly in our IT department. Also want to update you on ongoing negotiations, United Auto Workers of America and Human Services. We were at fact-finding yesterday, so I want to discuss that with you. Also, the potential sale of real estate and a pending legal matter. All of those topics will be allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so to ask at the conclusion of our Regula Board meeting, we go into executive session and we discuss those matters that I've identified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes on May 3rd?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to Denbo Gatch Funeral Home Ashland for indigent veteran Patricia M. Nera at Nova, Ohio, in accordance with the ORC 5901.25.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Community development, award various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from CHIP program year 16. Home repair activity for home repair assistance, which includes contingencies for any unforeseen change orders. These were the most responsive compliance specifications to be paid from the Contract Services CDVG account. Concrete and More, Inc., Avon Lake, in the amount of $4,730 for Eleanor Schleicher?
Schlecker.
At 164 Brookfield Road, Avon Lake, for separation of storm sanitary lateral. And to Solid Ground Construction, Inc., Westlake, in the amount of $5,550 for Jason Bosworth at 375 Gale Drive Ship at Lake River Roof Replacement.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Approve the semi-annual revolving loan fund report, period July 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Accept the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council and approve 10 tax abatements agreements, and the recommendation to continue these receiving abatement for one more year.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez?
Just for a little bit of explanation on both 13 and I believe we did CDVG under 12. Both of those are economic development issues that we participate in Lorraine County in an ongoing continuing effort to explain some of our programming. We're out here, the CDVG revolving loan is what we use to incentivize employers when they want to expand their operations. We can do low-interest loans for job creation for CDVG. The portfolios here, if anybody want to look at it, the reports there of the activities that are happening in the CDVG portfolio. We have a community development corporation that we work the CDVG through, and then it comes to the Board of Commissioners for final authority. That economic development corporation's been in existence for a number of decades, and they've done a pretty good job with the CDVG. Also, all of our tax abatements are in compliance. Don and his folks sit on the Review Board, the TRIC. They do that. A number of years ago, we had a few that were out of compliance. The Board acted aggressively to deal with that, with some callbacks. We also changed the language in those agreements to ensure that we had the ability to reach back and make sure that citizens of Lorraine County were well taken care of should companies fail to uphold their end of the bargain in those agreements. This agreement that was done today is one of those newer agreements that gives us greater ability to ensure compliance while receiving assistance from the taxpayers to grow businesses and jobs in Lorraine County. It's a great partnership. The taxpayers contribute vis-à-vis their elected officials to help. The company grows, jobs are created. Should either party not fulfill their promise, there is remedies in the new contracts. And this year, everybody is 100% in compliance, and that's a good thing for Lorraine County. So we are making things happen here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Award agreement with CT Consultants, Inc., mentoring the amount of $7,500 for engineering services, including designing, engineering, construction plans, bid assistance, bid specifications, bid tabulations, cost estimates, project inspections, and construction administration for the CDVG-funded North Ridgeway Senior Center Generator Installation Project in North Ridgeway paid from CBG program year 16 Contract Services account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Award agreement with Bromhill Engineering and Surveying Company, Avon, in the amount of $10,250 for the design, construction plans, bid specifications, bids, tabs, cost estimates, project inspections, and construction administration for the CDVG-funded Robert Street Rehab Project in Sheffield Lake to be paid from the CDVG program year 16 Contract Services account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Job and family authorized purchase service agreement with Boys and Girls Club Lorraine County in the amount of $425,375.87 for the summer camp for low-income children using TANF funds effective June 12, 2017 through August 11, 2017, and authorized director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors' approval as due form.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Tony, did you want to come up and talk about this?
Just need you to state your name and address where you're from for the record, and go from there. Tony Demakia, 1318 West 7th Street in Lorraine, Ohio. Again, we are item number 16 on your agenda, and that's for our summer program for the low-income children throughout Lorraine County. We are very fortunate to be even on the agenda, so we appreciate the consideration. What we do in Lorraine County is we serve, right now, we're serving about 900 kids a day. In the summer, we're hoping to serve about 500 kids a day, which is an increase of about 100 kids from last summer. And right now, we have a lot of kids on the roster that are interested in our summer program. We've also expanded our program. It would be the first time we'll be in Vermillion this summer, and we hope to continue that in the school year, too. So again, we feed children, we clothe them, put shoes on them. And our summer program has a lot of educational programs that we utilize to serve many children in Lorraine County. Again, we appreciate the consideration from the Commissioners, Mr. Cordez, and Lorraine County Jobs and Family Services, as this has been a great partnership throughout the years, and you know, we hope we can continue that partnership.
And appreciate the partnership, Boys and Girls Club, and what Mike and, you know, the staff does for our community. It's a great program.
Thank you so much.
I got to tell you, we work with the Boys and Girls Club through Workforce Development. We have programming over there. We are immensely satisfied with our relationship, the things that are happening, the work that gets done. I can't speak enough to the quality of what they're doing with the young folks over there and the outcomes. They're not about standing up talking about it, they're out there doing it. And I'm looking forward to even greater collaborations. As you know, we went into that comprehensive case management late last year, and we're working through the bugs, and after, we're going to do a lot more youth programming, looking for those organizations that have partnered with us in the past and had success to partner with us even in a greater way in the future. So congratulations to all the work out there. You guys do a fabulous job.
Thank you so much, and again, we appreciate the continued support.
Yeah, just want to stress the importance of engaging the youth during the community. You know, you talk to anybody in education and they talk about how important it is for the children to be engaged in some educational capacity during the summer, not just out there playing and recreating and, you know, doing those things, but actually engaged from an education point of view, because they hit the ground running a lot better when they come back. And it's a period of time where, you know, kids can get into mischief, too. So it's a good opportunity to educate the kids and keep them on track during the summer months, and it helps to make them even stronger when they return to school.
Yeah, the summer learning loss is a great concern for a lot of local school districts, and we hope to close that gap. And again, this is a program that's going to run eight to four, so these kids are going to be with us the entire day, which is so important, because like you pointed out, some of them don't have anywhere else to be. So hopefully, we can do a great job of helping those kids, you know, progress.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything? It's up to you. Let everyone know who you are again. You know the rules.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Rob Salkis from Job and Family Services and fiscal supervisor there. This is one of the three contracts that we're going to have for the summer with our summer camp programs. Looking to serve approximately 800 youth, hopefully, or children. There are good programs, Common Ground and Horizon on the agenda also after this, so we appreciate your support for this, and we appreciate Boys and Girls Club's support in serving so many youth that they're able to. It's a very good program that they run. Also, Common Ground ran one last year for us, did well with us, and adding Horizon to the mix in this year, too, also. So we appreciate your support for this.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with Horizon Education Centers North Homestead in the amount of $144,000 for summer camp for low-income children using TANF funds effective June 12, 2017 through August 18, 2017, and authorized director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors' approval as due form.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with Common Ground, the Sydney North Center for renewal overland, in the amount of $33,000 for summer camp for low-income children using TANF funds effective June 19, 2017 through July 20, 2017, and authorized director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors' approval as due form.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the engineer award contract to Erie Blacktop Sandusky in the amount of $1,46,946.49 for the Baumhart Road Part A and B Safety and Resurfacing Project in Brownhome. Five bids were received, and this was the lowest and most responsive compliance specifications. Eighty percent up to $711,200 will be paid by Federal Highway Administration, and the balance funded through Ohio Public Works Commission grant. Issue notice proceed on or about May 30 and completion by December 1, 2017.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I yield. Thank you.
Did you say you yield?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Mr. Riddus?
I do have a couple of matters of pending litigation to discuss in executive session.
Commissioners' report.
I yield also. I have no reports.
No report this week.
Well, enjoy.
Man will make up for it.
Man will make up for it.
These guys always give me a hard time, but can you show...
Start in the hallway.
Just because you're the busiest Commissioner.
Oh, my God, no, no, no.
Yeah, can you shorten the report, please? Okay. Just wanted to thank everyone involved with the Cinco de Mayo Dinner over at Mexican Mutual. As I always talk about, if you want to meet some of the friendliest people in Lorraine County for some great conversation, stop in the Mexican Mutual in Lorraine. Just a fabulous dinner, great conversation, and just had a marvelous time. Strong turnout on Thursday for our Lakefront Lorraine County Initiative in Sheffield Lake. Mayor Bring was there along with his team, and Mayor Zilka also stopped in the visit with us. We probably had about 40 individuals come out from the community to provide us with feedback on how they'd like to see the lakefront developed in Lorraine County and what their vision is for that. And that is the second public meeting that we've had. Two more will be scheduled for the fall. We'll be announcing those hopefully shortly, be towards the, probably the back end of the summer, early fall, for Avon Lake and then for Lorraine. But I just want to report that things are going very well. Feedback is great. I want to thank my colleagues for their strong support that made this grant possible, along with the Metro Parks. And we're making great progress. Good press coverage as well, too, on the turnout for both the Vermillion and the Sheffield Lake event. Had hoped to participate in the, with the Cinco de Mayo Parade. That ended up being canceled due to weather. The Chamber yesterday held its Economic Summit at Lorraine County Community College. Economist Ken Malin was one of the speakers. He is saying that it looks like it's going to be a good year in 2017. He doesn't see the recession, at least on the horizon, anytime soon, but he sees things being pretty favorable. He did point out that government is playing an important role in economic growth. Surprise, surprise. You know, it's something we try to stress all the time, that in government, you know, we have to make investments, just like you as a homeowner or as a business owner, and we try to spend those dollars locally, here in the county first, then within Ohio or within the region, so that those dollars keep turning locally to help the economy. And he did point that out about the major role that the government plays. They say that anytime there's been growth in the economy, it's also been because the government has been strong. Don Marinelli, who's a retired professor from Carnegie Mellon, for those who were there, will certainly agree with me, one of the most entertaining speakers that you will probably ever hear, but at the same time, very informative. He worked on a lot of projects in the city of Pittsburgh, and basically, his topic was, you know, if you can do it in Pittsburgh, you can, why not do it where you live? And just pointing out, I think, something that we all should pay more attention to, and that is play to our strengths. Recognize what your strengths are and play to those strengths, and that's what the city of Pittsburgh has managed to do. You know, I grew up there as a kid, and believe me, it was pretty polluted, pretty dirty, and a pretty rough town. But they now have turned things around. It's one of the most livable communities in the country. And he was sharing a lot of his thoughts with the whole room on what places like Lorraine County and Ohio and Cleveland can do to also attract more people to the region. Just wanted to point out that we're getting real good feedback from the restaurants that participated in Restaurant Week. We expect to have a full report after we do an inventory with them, probably this week, and maybe we'll get a report here in the next week or so to update you. But I know a number of us have had the chance to attend the local restaurants here, asking local owners about how things were going, and they said they noticed the business was up. One of the restaurants even said, "We're seeing a ton of business." I like that quote. So that's what it's all about. It's about bringing people into the county. It's about getting people out, spending the dollars. Preferably have people come in from out of the county, visit one of our restaurants, look around, like what they see, come back, spend some time in a hotel overnight, and help us with the bed tax for the Visitors Bureau. So I just want to commend our county administrator and also Jennifer Kennedy for all the tremendous work they've done. In fact, I think Jim went through every single page, line by line, so thanks for your involvement. And you're a foodie on top of it all, so it was good having you at the helm. And they were pointing out, in fact, at the talk yesterday, they were talking out about Pittsburgh being a top location for, uh, foodies. And there's another example of how you can attract tourists by having, uh, showcasing your restaurants.
They're doing a lot downtown Pittsburgh. Uh, it's become quite an attraction, uh, but, uh, we're, we're, we're not doing such a bad job in Cleveland ourselves. Uh, New York Times named Zach Burrell, one of the, uh, most hidden gems of chefs, uh, from the, you know, between Mississippi and the East Coast. Uh, and he has about seven or eight restaurants in Cleveland. So when we have other named chefs, everybody knows the Iron Chef, Michael Simon so forth. So Pittsburgh, watch out. Here comes Cleveland and right behind Cleveland, here comes Lorraine.
Well, Dan Marinelli was, I, it is his first time here, I don't know, last fall. I dinnered with him at a, an event where we're all at the same table and stuff like that. Just really engaging personality, you know, to think of things and talking about how the arts and everything really make things explode and how to redevelop the inner cities and, and so, and we did it. Uh, my wife and I and a couple of friends did one of those Pittsburgh trips from Diners, Dives and Diners a couple of years ago. Just took a drive up after scene. I mean, they're doing a great job down there, so I mean, it's, you know, similar to Cleveland, Rust Belt, the rust is falling off, so.
Well, people travel to eat. They, they travel to Dines and, uh, when I was out in California, I had the chance to, uh, meet with Charlie Palmer.
Lucky you.
Out in Cali- and spent some time with him out there and it was really great. And all he could talk about was Dante's here in, uh, Cleveland down in the flats. Uh, he was on his proteges and, of course, he has several restaurants now here, but, uh, he, uh, he did quite a bit of time with, uh, Charlie Palmer and, and had two different stints, one in New York and, uh, uh, I forget where the other one was, but, uh, so we have a reputation here in Cleveland and that's flowing into Lorraine County, because you're going to see more and more places open in Lorraine County, especially on the east side of, of Lorraine County. So I'm looking forward to, uh, something else. And if we show the numbers I think we're going to show, we're going to be planning another Restaurant Week for, uh, probably late October, early November. And in between there, I think we're going to do something with, uh, probably Cheap Eats, uh, Diner's Dives and Drive type thing or something along those lines to sanitize people to get out and invite their friends to come here in Lorraine County and visit what we have to offer.
Well, when I went to Beast Row eighty-three, they, when I made my reservation, they said they have a ton of new business, new faces, people that have never been there before. So they're very excited about Restaurant Week.
Well, you can beat the crowds over in Cuyahoga. Just come on over here and-
Free parking.
We have free parking, easy access, uh, and then we have friendly people that, and, and we still have lower sales tax. We don't have any syntax here either.
And I want to thank my colleagues for their support. This is all part of, uh, the new vision for Visit Lorraine County. We wanted to go in a new direction and try new things and, and, uh, this is just, uh, another example of what we're doing to take things in a new direction. And I'll just wrap up by saying, you know, being the big baseball fan that I am, whether it's the Indians or also the Crushers that, that our own Lake Erie Crushers open up the season Friday at seven oh five. They got a new logo and new colors. They're now purple and white, uh, with the big grape with, uh, baseball bat and a ball cap and, uh, uh, for the logo. But, um, uh, ran into, uh, Tom Cramming, uh, the owner of the Crushers yesterday. And he said he's excited to start the new season. He says he's exhausted because they did so many things in the offseason with rebranding and putting together new promotional ideas and, um, but it's, uh, affordable family fun, uh, at the new, was it Springer Healthcare Stadium now? Um, instead of All-Pro Freight. But, um, yeah, if you can make it out, uh, support the local team. And once again, that's a big part of our, uh, local economy and also brings in a lot of people from outside Lorraine County to spend their dollars here. And the MAC Tournament, we've got that starting too, uh, end of May over at the stadium. If you haven't had a chance, get out and see some really good college baseball. That's a, it's a great opportunity too. I think that completes my report, Madam President.
Board Correspondents.
I move to waive the reading and approve the Board Correspondents.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Public Comment.
Anybody wishing to come up and address the Board this morning? Did you have something, ma'am? You have to come up. Come on up. Uh, all we need is for you to tell us your name and address and- That's okay.
That's okay.
Okay, right, right up there, ma'am. Right at the podium.
No, we're at the podium.
Hi there. Hi, hi.
And you are?
Um, I'm Jerry Chackey. Uh, this is Joseph Rocha and we are the President and the, um, Director of Lorraine County Music Fest. And, uh, we are located in Grafton Township, uh, at one five four zero seven Avon Beldon Road. Um, not quite sure how to go about this, so, um, we've been, um, hosting music festivals and fundraisers for eleven years. We just became a not-for-profit, recognized by the state and received our charter member number last July twenty-second. Shortly after that, we were approached by the zoning inspector of Grafton Township. I'm going to, and, he's not a polite person, just going to put it that way. Um, when we told him that we were not-for-profit, he became very aggressive and said that you're not using the property for the conformed reasons or what have you. And we told him that the property is zoned for business, that we're a legitimate organization. And now we have found ourselves in a very unusual situation. He has filed two cease and desist orders on us, keeping us from having our events. Um, we've been told by other people that it's against the law for you to stop a not-for-profit from doing their fundraisers. Uh, we have now received a permanent injunction hearing that we're having on both on May sixteenth. We have no preparation for this. We have no funds for a lawyer. We don't know how to do this the right way. We've been doing it the right way for eleven years. Sorry, I'm a little emotional. Um, we don't understand what all the aggression is. We bring over a thousand people to our events in one year. That's a thousand people bringing revenue to our township and to your county and with no incidents. We then found out that, um, the chairman of the zoning commission lives one house behind us. And he has been overheard at several different events telling people he's not going to let us do this. So we're seeking help. We're trying to do this the right way. Someone suggested that we come and approach you guys. And that's where we're at right now.
It's a legal matter, so I don't know.
Well, is that, is that actually a legal matter? Unfortunately, uh, and first of all, thanks for coming here.
Right.
This is, this is a public forum. You're on TV here.
I know.
You'll be broadcast a couple of times, so, uh, getting your message out is, is good. Uh, you guys do, you know, I've heard of the event down there. It's a really nice event. Uh, but the unfortunate issue here is that zoning is one hundred percent up to the township. It's not up to the Board of Commissioners whatsoever.
Right.
Uh, we, we, uh, we do, we do the planning, but we don't do the zoning in the unincorporated areas. Um, and so, and this remains a township trustee issue. Have you been to the Board Township Trustees?
This is our issue. We don't think we're going to get a fair hearing based on everything we've heard them say. That we're going to get a fair hearing from the township, either from the trustees or the zoning commission, and that's why we're seeking redress through you.
Again, unfortunately, this board has no oversight over zoning in the unincorporated areas in the townships, uh, once they're zoned. Now, Mr. Innis is in a difficult position because he's also a legal counsel to the townships as well as to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, that's why I stepped in. I didn't want him to have to say anything to put him in a, in an awkward position with regard to his representation of the townships. Uh, but we, we really have, whether, I hope you receive a fair hearing. I, I truly do.
We paid five hundred dollars and filed an amendment.
If they even decide to hear it.
The, the, uh, wh- what we can do for you is, uh, I'm more than willing to, I, I know a few of the trustees out there, more than willing to have a conversation with them on behalf of the board, if you, if you'd like. Uh, but, uh, we, we, past that, we have little legal remedy to assist you with. Um, it's a local governance issue. But, but, uh, if you leave your, your name and contact information with the clerk, uh, as everybody knows, uh, I, I do what I say I'm going to do. And, and I, I will try to make the contact and, and see what issues and concerns are, uh, so that maybe you can move forward. But, uh, I wouldn't have a lot of confidence in that. I've, I've heard some things that, that they're, they're not happy down there. And they may even be less happy if, if I, if I stick my big toe into the water.
Media involved in this? I mean, Channel five, Channel nineteen and Chronicle.
Yeah, we've seen the stories. I've seen the stories. I was tracking them last week when I was out of town, so.
And we're just trying to do it the right way.
The, the, uh, but, but certainly, uh, we, we can talk to them and, and, and see what, what their concerns are. Um, but let me reiterate so that you don't think we want, don't want to help because we do.
Right.
We have no authority in this area whatsoever. And, and we, we try hard not to interfere while, with their, with their authorities. And they try not to interfere with our authorities. But I, I will talk to them on your behalf.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Wish I could do more for you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sounds like a great event.
I hope it happens for you.
We help a lot of people and, um, our whole goal is by twenty twenty, we're doing a Kids Rock Day Camp to help underprivileged children. And these, these events are how we-
Fund those.
Fund everything. And we can't do that Kids Rock Day Camp. We can't, we have an internship we're working with, with Midview School to help them. They need community service hours to do their credits. They could do it at our events. We also are working on trying to get a scholarship to put a kid through Overland College. So it's kind of hard to keep rolling forward when we are nine months into our fledgling not-for-profit and two weeks out of the gate, we're told that we can't do it. So we do appreciate you guys' attention and thank you.
Best of luck to you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the county administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor Downtown Alaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.